Thank you. Good morning, everyone. We're going to get started. I understand that the state law currently requires that the following announcement be made at the beginning of every remote council session. Due to the current public health emergency, City Council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News, Inquirer, and Legal Intelligence prior to the meeting and could also be found on P H L dot com. I now note that the hour is coming. I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll to take attendance. Members that are in attendance, please indicate that you are present or anything that you may choose. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Dom.
Morning, Council President and colleagues and the listening public.
Morning, Council.
Councilwoman Gauthier.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the public present.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues, and good morning, Philadelphia.
Morning.
Councilman Green.
Morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues and council. Good morning to the city of Philadelphia.
Good morning, Councilman. Councilwoman Bass is present. I think she was muted, so she is present.
My apologies. I am present. Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues and assistants of Philadelphia. Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Good morning, Council President, and good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman Heenan.
Morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Justice for Darius Winters, 15-year-old young man innocently murdered in Grace Ferry, South Philadelphia. Justice for Darius Winters.
Morning, Councilman.
Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, Philadelphia.
Morning, Council.
Councilman O.
Morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Morning, Council.
Councilman O'Neil.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, Councilman.
Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Ginona Sanchez.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Morning, Councilwoman.
Councilman Squilla.
Morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Present.
Morning, Council.
Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Present.
Council President Clark.
Present. We have established our form. You will now come to order. So despite the great need, there will be no indication today. We will, however, observe a very brief moment of silent prayer for our city, its leaders, and its citizens during the current public health crisis. Let's please observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 4th, 2021, and the chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 4th, 2021 be approved.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 4th, 2021 stand and approve all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. It was approved. Ayes have it, and that journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. And our next order of business is communications. And, Mr. Decker, will you please read the messages from the mayor and any other communication that you may have in your possession?
From the mayor to the president to members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am submitting here with the consideration of your honorable body. An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2021 from the Grants Revenue Fund, Director of Finance, Provision for Other Grants, to the General Fund, the Managing Director, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And by way of a reminder, we are asking that all resolutions, including privileged resolutions, be placed on a final passage calendar for the next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. And in our current remote environment, this procedure will provide an appropriate opportunity for public comments. I want to thank you very much in advance for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, can you please read the titles of the legislation that is being offered today by the members?
Councilwoman Parker offers two resolutions and titled a resolution honoring Dr. Ella Stanford and the Black Doctors COVID-19 Consortium for their contribution to health and equity during the COVID-19 pandemic.
In next week's calendar?
And a resolution commending Dr. Brenda A. Allen for being named one of the 10 most dominant historically black college leaders for 2021 and congratulating Lincoln University for earning the historic gift of $20 million from philanthropist Mackenzie Scott.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers one resolution and titled a resolution recognizing February 2021 as Environmental Justice Month in the city of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Gimm offers one resolution and titled a resolution authorizing the Committee on Children and Youth to hold hearings concerning recommendations to establish an independent youth services ombudsman person, ombuds person office to receive, investigate, and report on concerns from youth and families about safety or services for young people and congregant care, secure, or other forms of detention or any institutional facility.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. First of all, I'd like to thank my co-sponsors, especially the members of the Children and Youth Committee, council members Thomas Brooks, Gauthier, Johnson, as well as council members Heenan, Gilmore, Richardson, Dom, Squilla, and Bass. This hearing has been a journey. Overall, when we first came into City Council, or when I first came into City Council in 2015, I want to thank the Council President for establishing a committee on children and youth that would take a look specifically at issues that impacted them. And one of the areas that we took on as a committee very seriously was the issue of thousands of Philadelphia children who are mandated to live in state-operated or private residential placements, either by the courts or through the Department of Human Services. These facilities annually cost the city and the school district over $175 million in public funding every year. That number was significantly higher when we first started. Youth, the city of Philadelphia has made significant strides in strengthening its oversight and reducing the use of congregant and institutional facilities for children over the past five years in particular. Residential placement rates have dropped by 71% since 2015, and there's been a longstanding commitment to see further reductions and to improve the quality and safety of residential placements across all these systems. That being said, though, the Youth Residential Placement Task Force was established in 2018 by this council body in partnership with Mayor Kenny's administration to address many of the systemic abuses within these programs, to prioritize youth safety and well-being, and to develop a plan to ensure that youth and their families had a place where their health and well-being would be centered and that we would continue to reduce the number of them. And since the task force's final report was released in 2019, we've made really significant strides. There have been short-term recommendations such as guides that are now available to youth and families that include information about their rights. We're publishing, the city is publishing the first summary assessment of congregant care facilities. There's more proactive training that's been provided to our providers on evidence-based strategies. Governor Wolf has signed an executive order to establish a council on reform, so the work has gone statewide. There's now a child advocate position at the state level, and there's a Pennsylvania Juvenile Justice Task Force which I serve on, as well as several members of, from the city of Philadelphia, Senator Tony Williams, Kevin Bethel at the School District, and Cynthia Figueroa at Office of Children, Youth, and Families. But this will also see some significant changes. It feels like now is a good time to come back to council to establish what's been done and what still yet needs to be done. In the final task force report that was released, there was a recommendation to create a youth services ombuds person as a centralized, accessible, and independent means to investigate concerns from youth and families about safety and services while they are in these facilities. This recommendation was driven from the voices of young people themselves, who said that they did not feel safe to report mistreatment while in placement. And there was a recognition that there isn't really a single point of contact with the resources, even at the state level, to address multiple concerns about services for youth and residential placement across multiple systems, across regulators. We have young people who are paid pennies on the dollar that are forced to work to repay mandatory fines and fees or restitution. They're kept in placement facilities longer. These are things that are of great concern. And of course, many of us on this council body have been deeply active and vocal on the abuses that have been suffered, whether it was David Hess at Wordsworth in 2016, which has driven my work personally, as well as the transformation I think we've seen citywide, whether it was what happened at Glenn Mills, or more recently as Deveraux. Our hope is that this hearing will allow us to show this council body and the public great strides that the city has achieved and the significant needs that we have going forward. Forty-two other states have youth ombuds persons offices. The city, the municipality of DC also has a youth ombuds person office. It feels like the time is now, and I look forward to that hearing. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That will be on today's calendar.
Councilman Heenan offers one bill and one resolution entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 9, 3700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Bouncers by revising definitions of covered establishments and personnel.
For the committee?
Add a resolution honoring and recognizing Russell Collins for his dedication to Philadelphia through his extensive work in security and risk management, and for his efforts to improve the safety and security of Philadelphia's bars, restaurants, and nightclubs through advocacy and training.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers two bills entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Manthon Street and South 18th Street, and South 16th Street, and South 21st Street, South 20th Street and Ellsworth Street, Crawlow Street and Wharton Street, and Tasker Street, Titan Street and South 16th Street, and South 18th Street.
For the committee?
And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of South 15th Street and Reed Street, South 19th Street and Reed Street, South 18th Street and Federal Street, South 18th Street and Morris Street, Wharton Street and South 22nd to South 17th Street, Ellsworth Street and South 22nd Street, Morris Street and South 17th Street.
For the committee?
Councilwoman Ginona Sanchez offers on behalf of Council President Clark two bills entitled an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2021 from the General Fund, the Council, to the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and thereby implementing council's new normal jobs initiative.
For the committee?
And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2021 from the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance, Provision for Other Grants, to the General Fund, the Managing Director.
For the committee?
Councilman Green offers two resolutions and titled a resolution authorizing the Committee on People with Disabilities and Special Needs to hold hearings regarding services for people with disabilities and general compliance with and enforcement of the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Today's calendar?
And a resolution celebrating the life and honoring the memory of John Chaney as we recognize his groundbreaking accomplishments in the sport of basketball and his many contributions to our beloved city.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Brooks offers one bill entitled an ordinance amending Section 9, 4116 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Health Emergency Leave to establish leave time for public health emergencies and modify existing provisions concerning the paid sick leave and make technical changes.
For the committee?
Councilwoman Gauthier offers one resolution entitled a resolution calling on President Joseph R. Biden Jr. and the 117th United States Congress to immediately implement President Biden's plan to end the gun violence epidemic in cities and begin to appropriate the $900 million in funds President Biden pledged to cities with the highest rates of homicides.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Thomas offers one resolution entitled a resolution honoring and congratulating the Academy of Palumbo's robotics team, the Robo Griffins, on their success at the 2021 Coder Z League Pro Competition, where the robotics team was declared the world champions.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Bass offers one resolution and titled a resolution recognizing February 2021 as Love Your Library Month to honor libraries and the resources they provide communities to show appreciation for library users and to encourage Philadelphians to engage with their local libraries.
That will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman O offers one resolution and titled a resolution supporting the city's plan to prioritize vaccinations for returning teachers, administrators, and school employees at large, and urging the city to follow through on the plan in a responsible and efficient manner in order to regain public trust.
Next week's calendar?
There are another bills or resolutions being offered by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and our next order of business is reports on the committee. And Councilwoman Parker, I believe you're on now?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of the Hold reports out five resolutions with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee of the Hold, which is referred Resolution Number 200715 entitled, a resolution appointing James Aros Jr. to the position of Chief Assessment Officer of the Office of Property Assessment. And Resolution Number 200716 entitled a resolution confirming the appointment of Diana P. Cortez Esquire as the city solicitor. And Resolution Number 210031 entitled, a resolution confirming the appointment of Cecilia Thompson to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 210032 entitled, a resolution confirming the appointment of Lisa Selly to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 210033 entitled, a resolution confirming the appointment of Reginald L. Streeter Esquire to the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia. Respectful reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached resolutions to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Those, Resolution Number 200715, 200716, 201, 20, sorry, 210031, 210032, and 210033 will be placed on our final passage calendar at our next session of council. Chair now recognizes Councilman Green for report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Finance reports out two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman Green. Mr. Decker, will you please read the report?
The Committee on Finance, which is referred Bill Number 21004 entitled, an ordinance authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a service agreement between the city of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development relating to the refunding of certain bonds previously issued to finance and/or refinance alternative funding mechanisms for a portion of the unfunded actuarial accrued liability of the city of Philadelphia retirement system implemented pursuant to the Municipal Pension Plan Funding Standard and Recovery Act, approving the issuance by the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development of bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness in one or more series to refund such bonds, authorizing and approving the city's obligation to pay in full when due the service fee and other amounts payable under the service agreement. And Bill Number 210006 entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 19200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled City Funds, Deposits, Investments, Disbursements by amending Section 19201 entitled City Depositories by authorizing the city treasurer to deposit funds in Sand Tender Bank, National Association. Respectful reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. The chair again recognizes Councilman Green.
Councilmember Green, can you hear us, or you froze? You are mute.
Councilman Green, just move for the suspension of the rules.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit reading of this day, Bill Numbers 210004 and 21006.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 210004 and 210006. All in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Heenan for report from the Committee of Public Property and Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of Public Property and Public Works reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Public Property and Public Works, which is referred Bill Number 200656 entitled, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to acquire a fee simple title or a lesser interest in real estate by purchase, dedication, donation, condemnation, agreement in lieu of condemnation or otherwise, in parcels of land along the Schuylkill River and the Wissa Hicken Creek for public recreational purposes. Respectful reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading of this day of Bill Number 200656.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 200656. All in favor will indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar That concludes our reports on committee. And our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar for our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers 200580, 210084, 210086, 210087, 210088, 210092, 210093, 210094, 210096, 210097, 210104, 210105, and 210106. Mr. President, all other resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now, before we proceed with the consideration of these bills and resolutions, we will have our public comment session. We're going to take a couple of minutes to give our technology professionals some time to connect the speakers, and then we'll come back for our public comment session. Thank you. Thank you. Now that everyone is connected to the meeting, and before considering the resolutions and bills, before us today, we will consider the public comment. It will go as follows. Public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passes calendars for possible action at assessment of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call 215-686-3406 by 3:00 p.m. the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take your name, your phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support or against the legislation, and add you to our list. We will telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Under ideal circumstances, you will have three minutes to speak. And today, it appears to be an ideal circumstance, so you will have three minutes to speak. In order to be fair, I just want to say for the record, all those listening to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to establish time limit. Once invited to the meeting and asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony, and when there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, you will be reminded of this. Once your allotted time is passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks, and shortly thereafter, you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. Also reserve the right to limit the number of speakers where repetitious comments are being made on the same matter, and to limit the scope of testimony to only certain items on the agenda during the emergency, which could affect callbacks for the public comment at the meeting. Please be aware, just for the record, that this is a public meeting and is being recorded because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation as privacy. So by continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. I will ask, now I ask, Mr. Decker, to please read the name of our first speaker.
Sandra Calhoun.
Good morning.
And good morning to you, good morning to you, President, City Council, and all members of, all the members of City Council. I am speaking today in reference to...
all the members of City Council. I am speaking today in reference to resolution bill two one zero zero one zero. And I want to respect and appreciate this bill being offered by Gilmore Richardson, adopting an environmental social governance criteria and disclose climate risk information from all relevant parties. So I'm going to identify myself as one of the relevant parties and disclosing the climate risk that's overwhelming the West Philadelphia community and the South Southwest Philadelphia community as it relates to tires. Our communities in West Philadelphia and Southwest is oversaturated with tires, which is no, which is no friend to the environment. These tires are found, will be, can be seen in lots, streets, on the street curves all over the city of West and Southwest. Not to say negating the other cities, but I'm dealing with where I live and what I know. And the tires is a very serious and environmental problem and is currently, it appears to be unregulated because if it was regulated and the regulations are being followed, I would not see this oversaturation of the tires all throughout West and West Philadelphia, which these tires just present a, a risk to the environment. The sitting tires in these lots, the waste of those tires send off methane gas into the air, toxins into the air that we breathe. And I'm trying to understand, although I appreciate this bill, but writing this bill, what are you going to do, disclosing the climate risk? I want you to write a bill on how we are going to actively remove the environmental client, a climate risk from our community. The rubber from the tires is, is, in these here dump sites, mitigates the damages of environmental effects of rotting tires, rubber from the tires into our water, our soil, and our plants. So I am a party disclosing one of the, just, this is just one of the climate risks in our community, oversaturated with these tires and the tire business, tire business right next door, houses to live in. If that, that's not a climate and a risk, nothing else is. There should, I want there to be, which I'm searching for, a policy or law that speaks on a tire business being right next door set up to a residential house and community. I am real tired of Forty Fourth and Belmont and Girard, of the tire business there that I am now walking out in the street because of all the tires that's on the pavement. They have cords running from the inside of the business out to the curb and I'm stepping over. That's a safety hazard. It's a safety, health, and environmental risk. Another business, what's it called, new to you or whatever, his business is set up right next to a residential home. We have to walk out in the feet on Belmont Avenue because all of trucks are on the pavement, extended all the way back to compost, compost storage. This is not a good look. And this environment in West Philadelphia and Southwest Philadelphia is totally environmentally polluted. It's like an unflushed toilet overflowing with trash, litter, and toxins, and that's an environmental risk. Help me with this.
Thank you.
I have all kinds of reports to three one one. Help me to clean up the environment.
Thank, Ms. Calhoun, can you just please say your name for the record?
My name is Sandra, S A N D R A, Calhoun, C A L H O U N.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony, ma'am. Appreciate you.
Is it okay to say something?
Um, I'm sorry, who's that? Yeah.
I just wanted to recognize Ms. Sandra in all of her work and just say that I'm committed to working together on this issue. And thank you for your advocacy and all of your hard work on behalf of the community.
Thank you. I'm going to follow through up with this.
I know.
Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Ms. Calhoun. Mr. Decker?
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Well, yeah, okay. Well, thank you. That concludes our public comment. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, if you can, can you please read the title of resolutions number two zero zero five eight oh?
A resolution calling on the Pennsylvania General Assembly to adopt House Bill five twenty six ending the use of taxpayer funds to pay for cyber charter education when local school districts offer their own full-time cyber school programs.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ginn for motion.
Thank you, Council President. I'm, I move that, excuse me, just double checking. Uh, I move that the, that this, uh...
Two, resolution, resolution two zero zero five eight zero, Council Lady.
Yes, I, we are moving it to the, I move that the two zero zero...
Five eight zero.
Five eight zero be moved to the suspension calendar.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the resolution number two zero zero five eight oh be placed on the suspension calendar. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, motion carried, and will be placed on the suspension calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two one zero zero eight four.
A resolution commending the Philadelphia Seventy Sixers in creating the Buy Black Program to Support Black-Owned Small Businesses.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two one zero zero eight six.
A resolution honoring and congratulating Philadelphia natives Sensarian Harris and Erin Wilson for their new positions as White House Liaison for the Environmental Protection Agency and Special Assistant to the President and Deputy Director for the White House Office of Political Affairs and Strategy.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second, second, second.
All right. It has been moved and probably second that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two one zero zero eight seven.
A resolution recognizing February two thousand twenty one as Career and Technical Education CTE Awareness Month in Philadelphia.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two one zero zero eight eight.
A resolution commemorating the life and legacy of community activist Russell Medden, whose tireless advocacy for vibrant public space and public bike share led to millions of Philadelphians enjoying and celebrating the city of Philadelphia's public trails and provided a powerful model of civic engagement for the nation and the world.
Absolutely. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ginn for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you very much, Council President. As you and I both know, Russell Medden and many others. Russell Medden was a wonderful citizen. He was a friend. He was a neighbor of the highest degree. It was an honor to be able to know him. I met him first when he was taking care of his beloved Cox Park in the Logan Square neighborhood. He knew the name of every child, of every parent. He welcomed them. He celebrated Philadelphia. He contributed mightily, took on C S X when they threatened to close off access to Skookel River Park, along with many others within the communities and neighborhoods. He led a campaign to ensure that there would be pedestrian access to the, to Skookel Banks. And today, Skookel Banks is a testament to what neighborhoods and communities can do to revitalize our waterways, to create life and vitality and a place for community. He's gone and done so much more, whether it's been Philadelphia Bike Share and his commitment to that, to just celebrating what it means to be a neighbor of the highest degree. So present this on, with, with you, Council President, to my colleagues and move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Awesome, awesome. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two one zero zero nine two.
A resolution honoring Stephanie Resnick on her receipt of the prestigious Judge Learned Hand Award from the American Jewish Committee in Philadelphia for her distinguished legal career.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two one zero zero nine three.
A resolution recognizing the work of William R. Sasso upon his transition from his role as Chairman of Stradly Ronan Stevens and Young to Chairman Emeritus.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Mr. President, and move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two one zero zero nine four.
A resolution appointing Andrew Goodman to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Land Bank.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two one zero zero nine six.
A resolution honoring and congratulating St. Joseph's Preparatory School Football Team on their successful two thousand twenty season and overall six and oh record in the Philadelphia Catholic League.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Congratulations to the young people, staff, and parents there. And I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two one zero zero nine seven.
A resolution thanking Congress for passing the Save Our Stages Act and urging the Small Business Administration to equitably promote and distribute funds while continuing to support and invest in the arts and culture sector.
Chair again recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Been moved and probably second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two one zero one oh four.
A resolution recognizing February seven, two thousand twenty one as National Black HIV AIDS Awareness Day and honoring the work of Babashi in providing access to culturally sensitive, high-quality healthcare, HIV AIDS services, health education, and social services.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to move for the adoption of the resolution and thank Babashi and all the organizations that have done so much important, so much of the work around AIDS and HIV, particularly in the African-American and Latinos communities. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two one oh one oh five.
A resolution recognizing the week of February one, two thousand twenty one to February seven, two thousand twenty one as National Gun Violence Survivors Week to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and uplift the resilient voices of survivors in Philadelphia.
Chair again recognizes Councilmember Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, after this week, we all know that there's, well, it's not new to us that there is a lot of work that needs to be done on this very issue. I move for the adoption of the resolution as we work towards solutions. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number two one zero one oh six.
A resolution expressing support for longtime Philadelphia news anchor U K Washington and standing with all impacted employees at CBS Three amid reports of gross misconduct at the network.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman O for a motion.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution authorizing the committee on children and youth to hold hearings concerning recommendations to establish an independent youth services on Bud's Person Office to receive, investigate, and report on concerns from youth and families about safety or services for young people in congregate care, secure, or other forms of detention, or any institutional facility introduced by Councilwoman Ginn.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ginn.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It has been moved and probably seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
A resolution authorizing the committee on people with disabilities and special needs to hold hearings regarding services for people with disabilities and general compliance with and enforcement of the Americans with Disabilities Act introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Council President. I want to applaud the administration with coming up with the ADA Transition Plan. This is an issue that we have needed to do for some time and administration has shown leadership on getting us to this point. But we have so much more work to do. So this hearing is an opportunity to provide additional information regarding transition plan, to address some of the ableist issues that we have in our society, and really make the city of Philadelphia a city that's going to be open to all people regardless of your physical learning difference. I look forward to working with the administration on this transition plan and educating more people in the city of Philadelphia about what we need to do to make the city the most welcoming city that it can be. With that, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It has been moved and probably second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Proud to recognizing members regarding speeches I will note for the record, at this time, that we will use the chat feature available on Microsoft's Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for that particular purpose. With that said, are there speeches on behalf of the minority? And the chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Thank you so much, Council President. I want to take a moment to thank the eleven co-sponsors of my two thousand twenty one Public Health Emergency Leave Bill that I introduced today. This bill reinstates many of the protections from last year's Public Health Emergency Leave Bill and makes some improvements to the law. As we approach the one-year anniversary of the pandemic, the cumulative effect of inconsistent work, food scarcity, isolation, trauma, loss, it is being felt by our community.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
God bless you.
God bless you.
God bless you.
As families grapple with this severe financial strain, we must continue to provide them with the protections they need to keep themselves, their families, and our cities safe. Though there are hopeful signs as COVID-19 cases decline and as cities and states work swiftly to vaccinate the public, we must remain vigilant. With the new strain of COVID-19 circulating and with the opening of indoor dining, we cannot let our guards down. Adequate pay simply remains one of the best tools in stopping the spread and protecting our... most vulnerable community members who may not be able to afford to miss a day of work if they are exposed to COVID-19 or need to stay home to care for a sick family member. So I want to thank my colleagues for their strong support and clear dedication to this issue, and I want to thank all our healthcare professionals, nursing home aides, gig economy workers, food service workers, sanitation workers, grocery store employees, and all others who continue to keep our communities safe and our city running. Thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for your support for those very, very deserving individuals. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I wanted to just recognize the passing of former State Senator Stuart Greenleaf. We in this body presented him with a resolution recognizing his many years of work in criminal justice reform. He was doing that before it was popular, before it was cool. He was very much chastised and took a lot of heat for what he did. He changed the laws at the state level. If DNA evidence proves that you are not the person, you can thank Stuart Greenleaf. Seems like it makes sense, right? DNA evidence, but it has to be a state law. It has to be presented and adopted. I met him because of the Eric Riddick case, and we in this body have urged the state to do something about that, and not just in Eric Riddick's case, but in all cases of the Post Conviction Relief Act. That in any circumstance where substantial evidence, in this case, scientific evidence, proves that the crime was not committed in the way it was described, that a judge be able to hear the case so that a person not do life in prison while there is scientific evidence that they did not commit the crime. This is an ongoing battle, but when I went to meet Stuart Greenleaf, I was not sure what to expect. He was the Chair of the Senate Judiciary Committee. I did a quick review after I got the appointment, and to my amazement, found all the work he'd done. Twenty bills, twenty bills he had done. And he said to me right away, he will help and work on this, and he did. Unfortunately for me, and I think for a lot of people, he had already announced that he was not running for reelection. And I wish he had run for reelection. He would have been reelected, and he could work on this. But after he retired, we did recognize him, and I just wanted to say that he was a person who initially started out as a very tough-on-crime person, and I personally don't have a problem with tough-on-crime. But I do have a problem with being unjust, unfair, and discriminatory, and he was a champion of changing that in the system. So I thank him, my condolences to his family and his loved ones. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. On behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. I have a bit of a long speech today. Three years ago, the Philadelphia Eagles showed the world how teamwork, leadership, imagination could overcome insurmountable odds and make history. A running back takes the snap, a tight end becomes a quarterback, a quarterback becomes a wide receiver, and the Eagles defeat Tom Brady to win the Super Bowl. It's amazing. Teamwork, leadership, and imagination. I have chills in my body right now even just thinking about that. It was just amazing. So imagine this. Johnson &amp; Johnson has announced they're going to have millions of vaccines. They've released their new vaccine. It's a single-shot dose, and Philadelphia now has fifty thousand vaccines coming in per week to distribute. Picture this: a football stadium parking lot, labor parking lots, black church parking lots, outdoor music venue parking lots transforming into mass vaccination sites, doctors, nurses, and health professionals mobilizing outside of their bricks-and-mortar settings to administer thousands of vaccines a day in parking lots around the city. The National Guard activates not to defend the Capitol against domestic terror, but to combat a deadly virus in coordination with community leaders. Our Health Department, three-one-one Center, and the Office of Innovation and Technology working together, all managing an online tool and telephone hotline that allows every Philadelphian to register for their vaccination and get an appointment or be placed on a waiting list in a CDC-designed priority order. SEPTA running subway service to the link and bus service to all the parking lots and churches and the Man Music Center. Just imagine that. Operation Philly Special is the playbook that brings all of the city's assets to bear to fight a deadly virus. As all of you know, yesterday, I and a few of my colleagues on council called upon the mayor to get behind Operation Philly Special. Councilmembers Bass, Gilmore Richardson, Green, and Squilla stood in solidarity with me, and on behalf of our residents, Councilman Johnson and O were also supportive. Before I address the mayor's public response to Operation Philly Special, let me first address his private response. Within hours of my releasing a press advisory naming the members of City Council and labor leaders who would stand with me in support of mass vaccination sites, I began getting phone calls that the mayor and his team were making calls to shut our efforts down and quiet our message that we need a plan to vaccinate thousands of people a day efficiently and effectively. I asked the mayor to join us yesterday. Congressman Brady asked the mayor to join. We want to work with the mayor and his office, but I heard nothing back. The mayor's public response to our plan was equally spiteful. He accused our supporters of trying to give Philly vaccines to residents of the suburbs. This is what the mayor said. Are you deliberately trying to ensure that white, privileged suburban residents of other counties and states are prioritized for vaccination over black and brown taxpayers of Philadelphia? I don't know whether I'm more offended or saddened by that statement. Does our mayor really think so little of us as to believe that we would let out-of-state and out-of-county residents come in and deplete our supply of lifesaving vaccines for Philadelphians? I've asked Senator Shaviv Street to lead the effort to provide a National Guard staffing at each one of our mass vaccination sites to ensure that only Philadelphia residents get Philadelphia vaccines. It's my understanding the governor is fast-tracking HB three twenty-six to allow the National Guard to do just this, and that is how we will deal with the mayor's words, white, privileged suburban residents. And as a point of clarification, I ask this: what current vaccination program in either a hospital, health system, or pharmacy does not ask for identification? Former Mayor John Street was right yesterday when he said these responses were nothing more than red herrings designed to deflect the public's attention away from this administration's lack of a willingness to pull our amazing city partners together to develop and then execute a mass vaccination distribution plan when the supplies appear. So let me now address what happened last week when Health Committee Chair Cindy Bass called a hearing to investigate the Philly Fighting COVID debacle. Last week, I listened to the testimony for five hours about the city's plan for vaccine distribution. I have read all ten pages of the plan. To members of City Council, the plan was to outsource vaccine distribution to all of the pre-pandemic vaccine distribution channels without any real control of the vaccines once they left the administration's hands. And if you're going to outsource vaccine distribution through pre-pandemic channels and place all of your trust in these for-profit institutions to equitably distribute these public vaccines so that communities of color are not left behind, then you must first set up a unified information platform across all these distribution channels to register and schedule vaccination appointments, and you must create a unified information platform to track who gets these vaccines. You do it this way, so the Health Department knows, the mayor knows, this body knows, and so the general public is confident we are doing this the right way. We do this so we're able to target who we need to target. We do this so we see problems, we can move fast enough to address them, and now is the time to be transparent, inclusive, honest, and determined. We now, we know right now that over fifty-four percent, according to the website, of the men and women receiving vaccines are white. We can do better by controlling these things through large sites like Lincoln Financial Field with the right scheduling application in place. When you don't centrally control where these vaccines go, twenty-two-year-olds can hijack four doses of vaccines for friends, and that is why PHMC can offer to distribute its Philadelphia doses to employees regardless of eligibility or residency. We're discovering these problems because conscientious citizens who saw these diversions stepped up and sounded the alarm. We can do better with more people at the table. Up until last week, we had no real plan to deal with teachers and reopen schools safely. We have a stunning failure here to plan in a collaborative manner. Finally, when you fail to build equity into your distribution plan on the front end, you choose to outsource it to primarily white-owned channels without controls, you have lost the battle for equity on the front end and now forced to scramble to get it on the back end. And that is precisely what the city has done and is doing. That's why Dr. Alice Stanford, who's doing a phenomenal job, desperately calls a press conference yesterday, begging, begging white citizens not to take vaccines distributed in black neighborhoods because the city didn't build an equity into its distribution plan on the front end. Mr. President, a tremendous respect for you. Time and again, your leadership has pulled us all together to move the city forward. You've taught us all how to work with this mayor to achieve our goals, but at this moment, our mayor is fighting against us and not with us. We need him with us. We're on the verge of receiving massive quantities of vaccines, perhaps fifty thousand doses per week or more, and we are told by the mayor that we do not need mass vaccination sites because the system they have set up, a system that can barely handle the doses we do have, can do the job. What the mayor calls as mass vaccination sites in the report are in reality the gym of a charter school, two small churches, the common room of an adult care center, and a building on the campus of one university building. What Operation Philly calls mass vaccination sites are the link, the man center, four massive parking lots, and the largest black churches throughout the city of Philadelphia. The city's current mass vaccination plan is the equivalent of vaccinating through a handful of like mom-and-pop shops. Operation Philly's plan is the equivalent of vaccinating through supercenters with controls in place to ensure equitable and transparent distribution goals. Mr. President, today I call upon this council and the citizens of Philadelphia to speak with one voice and tell the mayor this: we can do so much more. We must do so much more, and if we, if you don't recognize this, Mr. Mayor, then get out of the way, and we will do it ourselves. I've spent the past week privately and publicly begging the administration, begging to do the right thing, to join with us in preparing to make mass vaccination sites a reality, and all I have gotten in response is accusations that I am motivated by something the mayor calls white privilege, even after having my motives questioned. I continue to beg for his support and collaboration. So let me be as clear as I can be today. The time to act is right now. Mr. President, as you know, I sent a letter to Commissioner Forley asking for a mass vaccination plan incorporating these ideas by February twelfth, that's tomorrow. I also intended to introduce a resolution today calling on the mayor to get behind Operation Philly Special and direct the Health Department to begin bringing these mass vaccination sites online. Today, at your request, I'm holding off on the resolution, holding off for a week, but I have four requests from the mayor. First, direct the Health Commissioner to immediately begin working with Councilmember Bass and her committee and members of council, and Dr. Stanford, to put Operation Philly Special into action with the goal of putting vaccines in the arms of the most, of most Philadelphians in the fastest timetable possible with built-in systems to ensure the equitable distribution of our vaccines. Two, direct the Office of Information Technology to begin working with council and community stakeholders to build a web-based and phone-based platform that acts as a one-stop-shop to register and schedule all Philadelphians to receive their vaccinations at the Philly Special mass vaccination sites and track all distribution from the city from vaccination into their arm. Third, make a commitment, a public commitment, to the citizens of Philadelphia that every citizen that registers and schedules an appointment through our website will receive a vaccination. Fourth, call Governor Wolf to mobilize, if necessary, the National Guard to the Philly Special mass vaccination sites to ensure that Philadelphia vaccines only go into the arms of Philadelphians. Mr. Mayor, please work with us. Take these steps in the next seven days to make these mass vaccination sites a reality. Philadelphian lives depend on it. We need to do this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you so much. As always, I reference myself as being the uncle. Kind of joked about being potentially the crazy uncle, but I understand my role has grown into a person that tries to bring people together. We are all focused on getting vaccines in people's arms, and I'm just a firm believer as a glass-half-full kind of guy. We can work together, and we can get this done. I mean, we have to get this done. I mean, the eyes are on us across the nation as a result of some missteps that happened earlier in this whole process, and I just, we got to figure this out one way or another because we, there's just too many people. I mean, I don't think there's a person on this call or this watching this broadcast that doesn't know somebody, obviously, that has had the vaccine, but somebody that has died, I'm sorry, from the COVID-19 disease. I mean, this is, this is a real deal. So, you know, we'll take a few days to try to pull this together, and I just, I just believe that like-minded people, more like-minded people in this particular incident, issue, will get it together. And I know there are some things in the works on all sides, but, you know, we got to stay focused. We cannot, this is not about any of us on this screen. It's not about me, the mayor, any of the council people. This is about the citizens of the city of Philadelphia and making sure they're safe. So, Councilman, thank you. Thank you for your awesome engagement.
Council President, I have a point of order. Could I be recognized?
Yeah, I was just kind of, I didn't want to interrupt.
No, thank you.
This is, you know, speeches are a little different than a council session. Councilman, Councilman O, you had a point of order?
Yeah, yeah, I do. And I'll be disruptive. You know, talk is cheap, and we have been talking and talking and talking about this, but we have powers that we have to use. And I have a bill, and the bill is that the Health Department cannot continue to simply act on its own without the oversight of council. They are restricted. The Law Department is saying they're not. That is not my reading of the code. I have spoken to the state, but they're saying they are not restricted by this council. They are. But to be clear, I've introduced a bill that they have sixty days of emergency power, and they have to come before this body to justify and explain in detail what they're doing, to answer our questions, to do all of that, or they shall be shut down. And this is ridiculous, and it is beyond ridiculous that this body tolerates this nonsense. And I'm sorry, Councilman Don, but you voted against a resolution that I introduced calling on the mayor to work more closely with council. Perhaps at the time, we were trying to work with the mayor and encourage him. That time has passed. What is another resolution? What is another speech and calling on? This is atrocious. Dr. Fauci just announced that by April, it's going to be open vaccinations. Everybody's going to walk in, and the federal government is saying, these are our vaccines. So you, city of Philadelphia, you can't decide who gets them or not. It's open, but we are not ready. And if we don't get a grip and a handle on this and exercise some oversight over this Health Department, it's our fault. When people are not able to go in and get vaccinated, it's our fault when people are not able to go in and get vaccinated. No more phasing, just open vaccinations. And of course, how ridiculous is this thing with the teachers, knowing that they're going back to work and everyone in the schools?
Council.
That's what I got to say. Thank you, Council President.
You're going a little beyond the point of order. Thank you, sir. You're kind of jumping the line in the speeches. Uh, thanks, thanks, thanks both of you, council members. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Well, uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, this, this is, um, this brings us to an interesting point because I think that what we need to do here is, as Councilman Dom said, you know, let's try to work with the administration. But I think as Councilman O said, that if they don't, then we need to use the powers that we have as members of council because, um, I am, uh, just continually appalled and disturbed by information that is coming out about the way vaccines have been distributed. Just, uh, right after the hearing, we heard about PHMC and the debacle that, you know, allowed them to be able to send out an email to their three thousand employees offering the vaccine, uh, regardless of whether you, you know, were at risk, regardless of whether you were, you know, in, in touch with patients or in a, a other compromising situation that will put you in closer line to being possibly infected with COVID. Um, you know, these are the kind of things that we just can't happen, and they continue to happen over and over and over again. Uh, you know, like I said right before that, we had just finished a hearing, a six-hour hearing on Philly Fighting COVID. And the lack of information, the lack of transparency was really just outrageous. And so, uh, while I always want to work with the administration first and foremost, I think we've got to move on at some point. Um, hopefully they will hear our plea, hear our cry, and, and decide to work together. Um, this is not the only solution. This is one of multiple solutions that was proposed to the administration, and there is no reason why we can't do this, why we can't work together. Um, the vaccine plan that, uh, if, if you want to call it a plan that has been offered by the administration, I just think it's very confusing. People still don't know where to go, what to do, how to sign up, how to get access. Some of the very basics of information are missing. Uh, just last night, I was speaking to a friend of mine who lives in Montgomery County who told me about how she signed up for a vaccine in Montgomery County and all of the information, the level of detail that was provided in terms of what she would expect, when she would expect to hear it, um, how she would be contacted, all of those things. This is not rocket science. This is something that should be easily figured out. And, you know, maybe they, they figured if they put it in the hand of, you know, a group of kids from, uh, recent graduates from Drexel University, maybe they figured, you know, that was the best way to do it. Uh, obviously, uh, we have some serious doubts and concerns about their ideology around how to get this done. Um, but, uh, you know, what, what we have right now in Philadelphia is pretty much a national embarrassment, a national embarrassment. And so we have to move forward and figure out what it is that we're going to do because as all of us know, people are dying. We all know people who have died. Um, I, I know people close to me who have passed away from COVID. You know, I'm outraged that, you know, people still won't wear masks. I still go by people in some neighborhoods who still aren't wearing masks, still not doing what we're supposed to do. And even though the numbers are starting to look better, we can see that things are, you know, we're, we're just getting ready to see a light at the end of the tunnel. We're not there yet, so we still have work to do. Um, so that's what I would like to say on the, on the vaccine. I also, uh, really wanted to thank my colleagues, Mr. President, um, for their support of our, uh, resolutions on National Gun Violence Survivors Week and also National Black HIV and AIDS Awareness Day. Um, and a gun survivor, just in case anyone doesn't know, um, but I'm sure we're all very familiar, but a survivor of gun violence is anyone whose life has been impacted by gun violence, whether it is something they have witnessed or threatened or wounded by gunshot themselves or were caring for someone who fell victim to a gunshot. Um, of these adult survivors, sixty-eight percent are black and Latino. And what's even more concerning is the fact that gun violence is the leading cause for death for black children and teens in this country. Last year, our city lost nearly five hundred Philadelphians to gun violence, and over two thousand Philadelphians were injured due to gun violence. As the end of Janu-, as of the end of January of this year, we already have recorded thirty-eight fatal and a hundred and forty-four non-fatal victims. That was just at the end of January, and we know obviously that number is significantly higher now. We, as a city, still have much work to do as we continue to battle this public health crisis. Last week was National Gun Violence Survivors Week, but every day we should be highlighting and supporting gun violence survivors who despite their painful experience, continuously advocate, continuously advocate for change through support groups, community and political organizing, and even filmmaking where they continue to share their stories. We must honor our survivors and work harder to reduce gun violence to keep our residents safe and healthy. This past Sunday was also National Black HIV/AIDS Awareness Day. And despite efforts in medicine to treat HIV and AIDS, there is still no cure, which leaves our people vulnerable. Almost thirty thousand people living in the greater Philadelphia region have been diagnosed with HIV. Black Americans are disproportionately diagnosed with HIV, and black women in the Northeast particularly are nearly twenty-two times more likely than white women to be diagnosed. And that's the Northeast, uh, portion of the U.S. HIV diagnosis among black, gay, and bisexual men has also increased by over twelve percent. Babashi Transition to Hope was founded as the first African-American organization in the U.S. to address the AIDS crisis. Since nineteen eighty-five, this organization has focused on providing quality healthcare, education, and social services, especially to low-income people of color. Babashi serves as one of Philadelphia's largest HIV and AIDS education and service provider as a source of free healthcare, food throughout the food first, first food pantry, and a safe space for the LGBTQAI community through their Hype Program. Babashi was certified, um, in twenty twenty as a champion in action in their category of inclusion and equality. Every day, Babashi works to uplift, uplift low-income and minority communities by improving their access to quality resources which weren't in their reach before. Today, this body officially honors the work of Babashi in raising awareness of black HIV and AIDS and the services they provide to address the disparity in HIV and AIDS. And so we want to give them a big shout out and thank you for all of the work that, that they do because, um, just like COVID, AIDS is rampant, obviously, in the African-American community. And we all know someone who is suffering or who is, uh, who we may have lost or who is dealing with the, the AIDS or HIV, uh, within themselves or within their family or their circle. So, um, big shout out to Babashi for all of the work that they have done for the city of Philadelphia for many, many years now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for your great work on that.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Canona Sanchez.
Thank you to my colleagues and all that passion this morning. Thank all of you. I put my parents on seven lists. I got a call that maybe today they will have access to a COVID, um, vaccine. This is urgent. It is necessary. Um, and so I want to be as helpful, uh, to my colleagues in this work. Council President, today I want to talk a little bit about the charge, um, that you gave to me through the co-chairmanship of the Special Committee on Poverty Reduction. You know, for the last two years, we've done a lot of work around the Poverty Action Plan. And, you know, we have three focus areas, one of them being education and job training. Through that work, I got an opportunity to spend a lot of time with a lot of subject experts, but in particular with Dr. Generals and Dr. Hype. It was clear to me that Community College of Philadelphia is an underutilized asset in the city of Philadelphia. It is clear to me that Community College of Philadelphia needs to be at the very center of our strategy for workforce development and educational attainment in the city of Philadelphia. It is clear to me that Community College should give every single high school kid uh, in the city of Philadelphia a clear and easy pathway to dual enrollment opportunities, expanded community, uh, CTE programming, and career development opportunities. Community College should be the training arm for all our city departments as we advocated for the pre-K program and still has not happened in providing, uh, the providers and their staff with an opportunity to get their associate's degree. All things we know will help with their upward mobility, will help with their access to more income and opportunities. The Cato Scholarship is a step in the right direction, but we gotta be bolder than that. Today, I want to publicly thank our First Lady, the Dr. Jill Biden, and her call for Community College for all. Every student in Philadelphia should be able to go to Community College for free. I urge Mayor Kenny and all the stakeholders to join together and prepare a bold plan. We need to be ready so that Philadelphia could be on the front lines of this federal opportunity. Community College has outlined this in their strategic plan. Let's embrace it. Let's make it happen. We need to advocate for Higher Education Act reform that includes allowing students to use Pell and federal grants for essential non-credit courses, for job training and retraining, and to support Twenty-First Century jobs, including advanced manufacturing. CCP's West Philadelphia campus is absolutely a step in that direction. I know, Council President, you've been a strong advocate of expanding Community College's footprint and access throughout the city. I've talked to alumni Congressman Dwight Evans, who wholeheartedly supports how we support Community College. We also need to align many of our existing programs to ensure that CCP can work and could collaborate with the Philadelphia Workforce Development Corporation, the Philadelphia Youth Network, and again, school-based CTE programs throughout the city. With COVID safety protocols, Council President, we need to go back to our discussions about how do we make school-based access, uh, programs to Community College, as in the case of Dobbin's, with tremendous renovations and opportunities so that the parents of those young people have access to that kind of training. Council President Clark, I know you support this. We gotta make this happen. We need to expand language access programs, high school equivalency, GED, and ESL instruction. In my former life, when I was at ASPDA, I ran a school at Edison in the evening for three hundred adults. Sometimes moving forward is about going back to basics and, and, uh, doing some of the work that we know has been effective. We all need to advocate and support the diversity at Community College of Philadelphia, its faculty, and its administration.
Good.
We need, I'm sorry, Council President. We need to especially make sure that Community College, through its current board vacancies, has an opportunity to bring in leaders from education and the business community to help them with this work. Council should also be at the table in these discussions. We need our state government to drive more support for state funding, to pay the state's fair share of Community College funding, and to ensure workforce development opportunities and funding. As we look at our tough budget season, I want us all to urge us to reimagine the challenges we face and the opportunities that these challenges create for us. Incremental steps are a good start, but it's about bold action and working together. Philadelphia students should be able to go to Community College for free. Their parents should also have access, and it's our job to make it happen. As Chair of Education, I call on all of us to make it happen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman, so much. Very, very much on point today. Uh, we will continue to stay focused. That education is the key for all of us. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Um, a few weeks ago, I talked about the fact that we can ask hard questions but also work together in a collaborative fashion. We have been dealing with this issue of the pandemic since last March. It has been an issue that has impacted every facet of our lives. And a number of us have been doing all that we can to address this issue. Many people in this body know and others that I serve in some different roles and capacities, in addition to being a member of City Council. So when I learned about what was happening in Detroit, uh, where they were doing mass vaccinations, I reached out to our former president of Democratic Minnesota officials, Scott Benson, about what steps Detroit was taking in order to do mass vaccinations. And then when, uh, my colleague Councilmember Dom talked about the initiative that he was working on with others, I thought I would join that effort because with the opportunity to bring all the resources together to try to help as many people in the city get vaccinated. Now, I was at the press conference yesterday. The spirit and tenor of the press conference was here's an additional idea or suggestion to try to help as many people get vaccinated as possible. Throughout the press conference, the tenor was we support and thank the administration for the work they're doing, and here's an additional idea that can help this initiative to get as many people vaccinated as possible. The passion, I think, that you heard in today's council session came out of the fact of a statement that was made that as a African-American member of council and more importantly, as a black man who was born black and will die black was very offensive. But I'm going to take the high road because it's important that even though what has happened in the past, that we work together to address this issue. And I'm hoping that coming out of today's session, there's not going to be additional attacks from one side or the other. Let's just come together and try to bring all the resources that we have, for no matter what background or perspective, to try to get as many people in the city of Philadelphia vaccinated. It's not about Alan Dom's perspective or Cindy Bass or Derek Green. We are all the city of Philadelphia. It's not Mayor Kenny, it's not Dr. Farley, it's not members of council. We all are the city of Philadelphia. So I'm hoping that coming out of this conversation, we're going to move forward in a collective way on working together, meaning briefing strategies on how we're moving forward. And it's not that I have the best way versus your way. It's about how we all can come together. And so I'm hoping that coming out of today's conversation, we're going to have that. We're not going to have additional attacks in the media about what this person said or what that person said, but we're going to move forward. This is a pandemic, as I've said, and we've all said, that we've never seen before. People are afraid, they're fearful of losing additional loved ones, losing their job, losing their business. So let's work going forward to address this issue. And we have a lot of other major issues that we've got to work on. We just came out of a year where we had four hundred and ninety-nine homicides. We're already fifty-five percent higher than that now. We've got to work on the pandemic, this homicide issue. We're going to have a very challenging budget process, so we have to work together. And that was the spirit out of yesterday's press conference. And for me, that's been the spirit of this body, trying to work together and not making it us versus them because we are all the city of Philadelphia. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Batier.
Thank you, Council President, and good morning, everyone. Earlier this week, in a span of less than twenty-four hours, we lost seven Philadelphians to gun violence. That's not just seven lives brought to an untimely end, including a fifteen-year-old boy who had his entire life ahead of him. It's not just seven families grieving the sudden loss of a loved one. It's entire communities traumatized by the constant gunfire in their streets. It's kids distracted from their schoolwork. It's adults afraid to go to and from their jobs. It's small business owners whose work is impeded by the presence of violent crime. And unfortunately, this day wasn't an aberration, um, far from it. Less than two months into twenty twenty-one, there have been sixty-three homicides in Philadelphia, and that's a fifty-one percent increase from the same time last year. Let's be clear about what that means. We are currently on track to have fifty percent more homicides than we had in We are currently on track to have fifty percent more homicides than we had in twenty twenty, the second most violent year in our city's modern history. And this violence is concentrated in black and brown neighborhoods. It's a reflection of the systematic disinvestment, discrimination, and disadvantages that have been forced upon our communities of color for generations. Clearly, we must devote more resources towards reducing gun violence. Our neighbors living with the reality of this violence day in and day out need relief right now. And that's why today, along with my co-sponsors and longtime champions of combating gun violence, Councilmember Jones and Councilmember Johnson, I've introduced a resolution calling on President Joe Biden and the United States Congress to implement the President's proposal to end the gun violence epidemic. President Biden campaigned on an ambitious plan to address gun violence, including a nine-hundred-million-dollar initiative to fund evidence-based violence interventions in the cities experiencing the highest number of homicides per capita. This funding would save a tremendous number of lives. It would fund the expansion of existing gun violence prevention programs and provide necessary resources to launch new efforts. President Biden's plan also calls for reforming, um, sorry, President Biden's plan also calls for reforming federal programs that serve communities affected by violence to address trauma, increasing federal funding for trauma-informed and culturally responsive care, and creating a network of trauma care centers for survivors of violence. I am deeply supportive of all these ideas, but it's time to act. In the weeks since inauguration day, there have already been more than a thousand lives lost to gun violence across our country. So today, we are asking President Biden to move quickly in implementing this plan and to prioritize the parts of it that aim to end the current gun violence emergency in black and brown communities, both here in Philadelphia and in cities across the country. But I want to be very clear. This does not absolve our city government from making gun violence reduction a top priority. Back in September, fourteen members of this body, co-sponsored, um, supported my resolution urging Mayor Kenny to declare gun violence a citywide emergency. Five months later, twelve hundred Philadelphians and counting have signed a petition calling on Mayor Kenny to move forward with these actions. Philadelphians know what an emergency is. Gun violence is an emergency. People dying on our streets every day is an emergency. People feeling like their cries for help are going unanswered is an emergency. So today, while we're calling on the President to take action, that doesn't let us off the hook as a city to do more to bring peace and justice to our communities. The most urgent and fundamental human need is to be safe, to be free from the dangers that might suddenly end our lives. If people aren't safe, nothing else matters. And that's why we need action now to address this violence head-on. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman. Keep up that that fight, this is so, so significant. Um, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. President, I simply want to uh, make an announcement uh, for those Philadelphians who live in zip codes one-nine-one-five-zero and one-nine-one-three-eight. Again, one-nine-one-five-zero and one-nine-one-three-eight. I want to invite you to attend our Mount Airy Community Council Virtual Meeting on Thursday, February eighteenth at six P.M. Thursday, February eighteenth at six P.M. If you have an interest in uh, youth activities, um, any community-based activities, land use activities regarding uh, the RCO, uh, Town Watch, um, our Vote Squad, um, and or ward structures, we invite you to participate in this meeting. And the reason is, and uh, I need to say this, um, for the record to some community-based leaders who I met with earlier this week, uh, Mr. President, who were talking about having received an influx of invitations, and I don't know how their um, sort of folks are, you know, acquiring this information. Uh, but the residents have said like, well, we don't, we've never heard of these groups before, but they're sort of uh, calling on us, asking us to participate in different activities, but sort of we don't know uh, who they are. With that being said, I want to remind those of you who are in zip codes one-nine-one-five-zero and one-nine-one-three-eight that all of the organizations that will be participating in this meeting on Thursday, February the eighteenth are organized and run by people who live in these communities. Um, the the agendas, the strategies, the methods being employed to address issues in the communities are not being decided by people who don't live there. Um, for residents in uh, Matuoh and two-six uh, and and other zip codes, we're coming, you just have to, it's taking us some time. But as soon as we get through this Mount Airy Community Council meeting, you know we will be moving forward. Um, their their website is mountairycommunitycouncil@gmail.com or the email address, mountairycommunitycouncil@gmail.com, uh, number uh, two-six-seven-nine-zero-eight-three-eight-two-four, if you want to RSVP. If you didn't get that, always feel free to email or call uh, my office, heatherpearce, heather.pierce@philladelphia.gov, or two-one-five-six-eight-six-three-four-five-four, or three-four-five-five. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to uh, provide a quick update regarding our ongoing police reform work. Um, as you know, we held a historic hearing last fall in accordance uh, with Bill two-zero-zero-three-six-four-A and Resolution two-zero-zero-five-four-six. The hearing went on for seven hours, and we heard from nearly one hundred members of the public about what they want to see in the new police contract. This was the first time the public was ever able to offer comment on this crucial contract, which dictates nearly fifteen percent of our city's budget. Following the hearing, my team compiled a report summarizing all of the testimony that was offered, both during the hearing and in writing. And I wanted to stop and uh, thank my team for their diligent work, uh, Taylor, Eliza, Santos, Dornell, and Sean. Uh, we then used those findings to develop additional recommendations for further action on police reform at the city, state, and federal levels. Uh, as a member of the Police Reform Working Group, I look forward to our continued work uh, on police reform in the city of Philadelphia. Today, I am publicly releasing the report. Um, it was important to me to lay out very clearly what we heard from the public and to offer recommendations based on their testimony. This report has been shared with our Deputy Mayor, Rich Laser, and I want to thank him and his team for participating in the process. I truly appreciate how our Deputy Mayor always answers when we call. And he works to be responsive so we can be responsive to our constituents. So thank you, Deputy Mayor Laser, for being a shiny example of how to work together when the uh, with the legislative branch of government. The report is available on our council page at phlcouncil.com slash Catherine Gilmore Richardson. And lastly, Mr. President, I I also wanted to rise in support of my colleagues' call to work together with the administration to ensure we do all we can uh, to get as many Philadelphians vaccinated as possible and that we speak with one voice for one Philadelphia. Uh, I recognize that this is not about council or the administration. This is about saving lives and protecting the health and safety of the people we serve. So I look forward to the work we will do together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, that appears to be the last speech on behalf of minority and majority. Uh, before I call for adjournment, just want to say one quick thing. Uh, we will figure this out, okay? Um, it's time to step up. City Council always steps up, all right? And I fully anticipate that we will step up in the most meaningful way. Uh, we're going to work together um, one way or another. Uh, because the reality is, we all represent the city of Philadelphia. We're the eighteen Board of Directors of the city. So this doesn't happen unless we get engaged and we figure this out. So uh, we'll be reaching out shortly. Uh, there's some information uh, that should be forthcoming about uh, what is happening uh, as relates to the relationship with the federal government. So we'll we'll reach out shortly and hopefully can start this process so we can uh, only have one silo, not these multiple silos across the government. Uh, guys, thank you, uh, thank you as always so much for your your passion and your hard work and your commitment to the city of Philadelphia. Um, again, I know I say this every every uh, term. Uh, this is the best city council that I've ever worked with, right? So I'm gonna say it again. Um, with that, uh, Chair, I'd like to recognize uh, Councilman Jones for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, the the number one call my office should be getting right now, this time of year, should be potholes. It is, where do I get my vaccination? Which is so different. Uh, and tomorrow we'll be at Fifty-seventh and Vine with the testing van between ten and twelve. All people are welcome to come get tested until they can come get vaccinated. And with that, Mr. President, I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, at ten A.M.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved to second at the council standard adjournment until Thursday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, at ten A.M. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, aye, thank you all very much. Uh, talk to you guys shortly. Thank you, God bless you.
Thank you.